To transactive business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the place to the flag. That will be done by Mrs. Simons. Would you please give us the eye?
Yes, please stand to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm glad that those who came out and we're here today for this time of the year. And we're going to hear our proposed FY operation budget proposal. And I believe in Ms. Mary Russo. Brian, would you lead us into this discussion?
Absolutely. So tonight you'll hear the operating budget for the 2018-19 school year. This $303.6 million budget represents a 2.3% increase over this year's spending plan. Funding for this budget is based on the governor's proposed budget. I know Mary Lou will talk a little bit about the uncertainty that we're having at the state level. And also an increase of $700,000 in revenue from the city. Just so you know, this proposed funding funds all of our current initiatives and departments aligned with our academic agenda and our strategic plan. So at this point, I ask Mary Lou to come up and walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, Mr. Hunter, members of the board. Good evening.
Good evening.
We began our budget conversation with you this year in October. You might remember that vaguely. We updated you again in January about what the state budget looked like at that time and what our department needs were. And so tonight, it is time to present to you the superintendent's proposed operating budget for the next school year. And as Mr. Nichols said, we're looking at $303.6 million in revenue for next year. And let me tell you how we get that. We are looking at a $6 million increase in state revenue. We are still using the governor's budget, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. And again, as Mr. Nichols said, we are looking at a $700,000 increase in city revenue. You may notice that these city revenues may not look familiar to you. If you know that this year, our city revenue was $119 million. This revenue is shown without debt service. We've agreed with the city that will no longer include debt service in our revenue. It seemed to be quite confusing last year. So I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute as well. Our federal revenue, you know, is largely comprised of impact aid revenue. That's flat for next year. But the increase is driven largely by our increased efforts in collecting Medicaid reimbursements for services that we provide to students that qualify for that. So OTPT services, some skilled nursing care, some speech, that kind of thing. So when we provide those services, we're allowed to be reimbursed by Medicaid for that. And last on the list, the other revenue, you can see, is dropping by $300,000. This is largely due to the indirect cost rate that the state provides to us being lower than it has been in the past. And so that's going to cause a $300,000 reduction. And all of that nets a $6.7 million increase in revenue for next year, which is 2.3% more than this year. I do want to talk for just a minute about the House and Senate budgets. It's really kind of historical now because they really are kind of moot since the General Assembly adjourned without a budget. And it's my understanding that they have decided this afternoon, or it was announced this afternoon, that they will reconvene on April the 11th. So it's going to be a while, I think, before we have a state budget. But I thought maybe what we learned from the House and Senate versions of the budget might be helpful and interesting to you tonight. The big contention, of course, is whether or not we expand Medicaid and whether or not we accept federal revenue to do that. So the governor's budget did assume that we would. The House budget assumes that we would. The Senate budget assumes that we won't. And that is really the cause for the consternation. But the House budget also for next year, because they had more revenue, decided that they would provide more lottery funding. And for us specifically, it would be $1.2 million in additional revenue. Lottery funding, we can use for any purpose. So it would be funds we could use however we chose. The House budget for 2020 moved the salary increase, which the governor, you recall, had started effective December the 1st, 2019. They moved it to July 1st, 2019. So there would be, in the House version of the budget, there would have been a 2% raise for the entire school year. The Senate, however, did not have a raise in 2020. They eliminated the raise. And in 2019, I'm sure that Mr. Ashby will like this, they increased the preschool funding, Mr. Ashby, from $6,125 per student to $6,500 per student, which is really long overdue. And we would be delighted, of course, to get that funding. But that would be about $276,000 for us. Anyway, this is all a little academic since they adjourned with no budget. But just to give you some indication of where the thinking was as we're talking about the budget. So again, who knows when we'll see a state budget, but hopefully it'll be before June. I thought it would be helpful to give you this state revenue trend. This is starting in 2009 and going through the proposed budget for next year. And you can see that precipitous dip from 2009 to '10 and then '10 to '11. You recall the Great Recession. That was, that's what it looked like in state revenue. And we've been on a slow climb back from that. We have not really gotten back to our 2009 level of revenue, and really for two reasons. One, a large part of the state revenue, as you know, is based on our enrollment. And our enrollment has dropped from 2009. But as well, the state changed some of their revenue formulas during the recession, and they have not changed them back to what they were at that time. So that's another piece of angst that we'd like to get resolved at some point. I thought, you may or may not know that J-Lark does a study every year. It comes out in February every year. And so this one came out last month, that they rank Virginia on a number of metrics, I think between 30 and 35 metrics, if I recall. And so I thought these two were interesting. J-Lark showed that Virginia ranked 12th in per capita personal income, but 40th in per pupil funding for pre-K through 12. So I thought, maybe we can do as a state a little bit better. We'll see. The same information for the city revenue for you. And what I've tried to do on this slide is show our city revenue in its former, now former, two parts. And so the top lighter shade is the debt service, what was formerly the debt service portion of our state, of our city revenue. And the darker part of the bar at the bottom is the portion of the revenue that we were able to use for operations. So let's take, for example, this current year, 2018. You can see that the revenue was $119 million. 8.8 million is the number that's in that light shaded area at the top, was for debt service. So it came to us and went straight back to the city to pay debt service. And so what we're able to use for operations was the $110.2 million. And because it just seemed like too confusing, we decided that it was best to take it out. The city agreed, and so we will be doing that. But you can see, just a little history, I feel like a little historian tonight, this has not always been in, debt service has not always been in our city revenue. It started in 2000, 2001. And it started because, at that time, there was some conversation with the city about funding the school division using a funding formula. You know, some others, localities do that, and there was conversation in the city at that time of doing that. And the city at the time, city staff, said, well, if we're going to use a funding formula to fund the school division, then we should consider all of the funding, the entire investment that the city makes in the school division. And that would need to include debt service. And we said, well, that makes perfect sense to us, so we agree, and we'll do that. And so since that time, debt service has been shown in our operating budget, and that's the reason why. So this is the debt service, just that top piece of the bar now for the same period, 2009 through 19. And you can see that the debt service has gone from $13.2 million in 2009 to 8.8 million it is this year. The $700,000 that we've included in the city revenue increase budget for next year is the 8.8 to 8.1 drop. And so you might say, well, why is the debt service dropping? What causes it to drop? The city issues debt generally over a 20-year period, and so this debt service drop is due to older issues of debt being paid off faster than new issues are being made. So really, a lower investment in capital, essentially. So that's what's going on with the debt service. Okay. So enough about revenue. Let's go on to what you're probably more interested in, and that is, whoops, what's going to happen with the revenue? So I wanted to start this evening first with the funding priorities, and these are the priorities that have driven our balancing of the budget. Competitive compensation heads the list, as it has for the last few years. And why is it important? Several reasons, most of them obvious, I think. We are still experiencing a teacher shortage, and so finding teachers is difficult, but finding good teachers is harder. And so we want to be competitive in that hunt. And as well, we are experiencing difficulties from time to time hiring other employees as well, tradespeople, try to find a plumber, try finding HVAC mechanics. So it's not just teachers. So if you want to find good employees, you have to be competitive in the wage hunt. So that's just a factor of life. So we have salary increases and salary compression adjustments as part of competitive compensation. So we really do think we need to continue the compression adjustments. You know that we've been doing that for the last few years, both for teachers as well as some of our support staff groups. And we're planning to do that again next year, proposing that to you this evening. The next priority is additional staffing. We do have some additional staffing needs for next year. We need additional ESL teachers. We need some additional guidance counselors, and we do need some additional HVAC mechanics. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Third on the list is our technology. It's an ongoing need. So we need to replace our phone system and some teacher laptops. And last on the list, cash capital. You know that we are not able to do all the things that we need to do in our buildings with the funding that we get for our capital budget. And so at some point, we need to address some of those issues. And so the only other budget we have is this one. So we'd like to address some of that. Okay, so what actually made it? Those were the priorities. And so looking from that list, what really made it in the budget? We have, in the budget currently, and the draft is before you, a salary increase of 2% for all staff. On top of that, we have compression adjustments for teachers and some of our support staff groups. And I'll show you which ones in a minute. Sometimes as important as what's in a budget is what's not in a budget. And so we do not have increases to our healthcare premiums, copays, or deductibles next year, as we did not this year. Our plan is still performing pretty well. You may recall that we were able to do a premium holiday for our staff for three months this year. And so we don't expect to need to do an increase for next year. You may recall when we talked in January, we told you that the state had lowered the VRS rate. I expect that will probably continue, no matter what, who does, what happens with the state budget, I think that will continue. Something we didn't share with you because at the time, we were really not aware of, and that is that the city's pension cost for us is up for next year. It's up a lot, $1 million up. And we'll look at that again in a minute. And then also, we, as I mentioned, need additional ESL teachers. We're proposing seven additional ESL teachers. We have over 1,500 ELL students, English language learners. We have, the state funding for that is 17 teachers per thousand students. That gives you a ratio of one teacher per 58 students. Hard to make any progress with that kind of ratio. Our current staffing ratio for ELL students is 1 to 39. By adding these seven teachers, we'll go to 1 to 33. That is, right until we see more students show up, and I project that that will probably happen. So, but until then, that will, we'll work on that ratio a little bit. And guidance counselors, we have several schools that have, elementary schools that have larger populations than one guidance counselor can really reasonably serve. The state SOQ funding for guidance counselors is one for 500 students. But if you have a 600 or 700-student elementary school, you still have one guidance counselor. So this is intended to help us with that. We're proposing to fund two additional guidance counselors. And although you cannot see it on that slide, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure why, we also are planning to hire two HVAC apprentices. And we have had a lot of difficulty trying to hire seasoned HVAC mechanics. And so our thought is that we'll try to grow our own. And so our plan is to hire two apprentices and train them up to work here as HVAC folks and help us keep our aging equipment going until we have the funding to replace it. Okay. Also new in 2019, I mentioned that we needed a new phone system. Actually, we have a phone system, of course. We need to replace that phone system. We have a voice-over IP phone system. It was installed eight years ago, and it's reached the end of its service life. It went out of support in December of last year. We're no longer able to get parts. It was this phone system that enabled us to put phones in our classrooms, and so we view that as really integral, and so that's something that we need to do. It's also time to replace teacher laptops. Both our middle school and elementary school teacher laptops are five years old. Unfortunately, we're going to replace only the middle school laptops, and we are going to upgrade the elementary school teacher laptops. And I'm sure that they'll work really well. So, that we could replace them, we would. And probably in another year or two, we'll be able to do that, but not for next year. And then last on the list, you can see Huntington closure with a question mark. Of course, the board has not decided yet whether or not we'll close Huntington for the next school year, but because we had to get a budget together, we've made some assumptions about closing. And if we do close, there'll be some positions that we won't have to include in next year's budget, and so we have adjusted the budget for that. Okay. So this slide shows what our operating budget for next year looks like by function. You can see that large blue slice is instructional services. It's 74% of our budget, not surprisingly, that it's the largest share. You can see that the next largest slice is operations and maintenance. I think most of the others are kind of self-explanatory, but operations and maintenance includes not just our plant services and custodial services, but also our security force and our warehousing operations. So that's what's in operations and maintenance, and that's why it's a little larger than some of the others. So you can see what the relative shares of the other pieces are. And you see that little teeny sliver, facilities and debt service. Again, since we've taken debt service out, that's a much smaller slice of our pie now. This is another way to look at our budget, our cost category breakdown. You can see, looking at this, that our, we're a very people-intensive operation. 87% of our cost is related to salaries and the benefits for folks that do the work that we're here to do. You can see that $264 million of next year's budget is personnel-related cost, and a little less than $39 million is for non-personnel-related costs. So that other 13%, you can see the slices there, all relatively small slices. But you can see how that breaks down. But as I mentioned, we really are a lot about the people that are here to do the work that we need to do. And this is a slide that we have shown you over time to help you keep abreast of how we're doing with regard to teacher pay and how competitive we are with the groups that we compete with for teacher talent. So the way this is laid out, just as a refresher, it goes from zero years of experience, so our starting teacher pay, then teachers with five years of experience, 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years. And so we're highlighted in yellow, and it shows where we are vis-à-vis our peers at each of those points on our teacher scale. This is based on the current teacher scales, 2018 scales. And if you remember, just a few years ago, we were, we didn't look quite this good. So we've made some progress in the five and 10-year categories, or part of the scale. But you can see that we still have some work to do at the 15- and 20-year portions of the scale. So that's why we feel we still need to do some compression adjustments for our teachers, and that's what's proposed for next year. The teacher salary adjustments would range from 2% to 3.8% based on what's included in the budget. And those that would get the largest increases would be in that last column, people who've been here for 20 years or more. So that will help, I think, get that group where they need, closer where they need to be. Now, we can make our adjustments. What we can't control is what everyone else is doing. So when we show you this slide next year, we'll have done what we are able to do based on the budget and what you approve. I can't tell you what everyone else is going to do, but it's always fun to watch and see what happens. Okay, so this is looking at four of our support staff groups, our custodial staff, our CNS workers, security officers, and nurses. And we brought these groups to you last year as we began talking about the current year's budget. And you might recall that we were either last or next to the last in every category. So you told us that that really wasn't acceptable. We didn't think so either. And so we made some adjustments in this year's budget to increase the starting pay. And so this is starting pay for these groups. And you can see that we've made some improvement. So this is, again, based on this year's salary scales, and we are much better off than we were. So some significant strides. What we have included in next year's budget is, as we brought the people to the bottom of these ranges, these new ranges, we created some compression in the ranges for experienced people. So next year's budget would include some experience adjustments for those folks, just as we did for our drivers this year. Same kind of situation. Okay. So if you look at all the things that we have done, this is what each of those things cost. So the 2% raise for each of, all of our employees is $4 million. The teacher compression is another $1 million, three. Our support staff compression is another $1 million. And we talked about the increase in the pension cost. For the city, that's $1 million, and the VRS rate decrease saved us $900,000. The 11 positions that are added in the budget are $800,000. The closure of Huntington would save us $1,007,000. That is in staffing as well as some utility costs. Replacing the phone system, the teacher laptops, and also adding the technology equipment that we need at DSA for their fifth grade, since we'll add a fifth grade to there next year, is $2.5 million. We've shaved off a little from our fuel and utilities budget, $600,000. Our OPEB funding is starting to trend down. I didn't know I'd stay here long enough to be able to say that sentence, but that is good news. So we're able to save $200,000 there. And then all the other changes in the budget net to a reduction of $500,000. So what you can't read on the bottom, again, I apologize for the way these fit on the screen, is that that net increase of $6.7 million, which is what the revenue is up. So in order to balance, that's what the expenditures had to be up. So at, so we talked about what's in the budget, but at the end of every budget process, there are some things that didn't make it. So these are the things that hit the cutting room floor, as it were. There were some other staffing requests as we went through the budget process, and you can see what some of those were, to the tune of about $1 million. When I spoke to you in January, we had talked about the possibility of a 3% salary increase for all staff, which would have cost another $2 million. We weren't able to balance the budget with that, so that didn't make it. And then there are a number of other things, as we talked with department leaders during the budget process, that they identified as needing for the work that we do, materials and supplies. You can read all the different areas where those things went unmet. Educational technology is a big area, big cost. And then cash capital, we don't have anything in the current draft of the budget to address cash capital. Was one of our priorities, has been one of our priorities. It's something that often doesn't make it into the budget, just because other things seem more pressing. And then infrastructure is really kind of a part of the cash capital need. So you can see that there's over $11 million of things that didn't make it in the budget. The list, of course, could be longer, but these were things that we identified as we went through this version of the budget that didn't make it. So the way that those things can get in the budget is by additional funding. So this slide shows where, what portion of the city's general fund has been allocated to schools, starting in 2005 through the current year. And you can see that there's been a decline in that, particularly in the last few years. And as we read this morning in the paper, if you read the paper this morning, the city has its own funding challenges, and we certainly understand that. But not that long ago, we were a larger share of the city's general fund. So if you look just two years back, 2016, if we could just get back to that level, that would mean another $5 million for the school division. So hopefully, we'll see this trend change sometime in the near future. That brings us to the calendar. We have a public hearing scheduled for next Tuesday night. And the following week, we're going to ask you to approve a budget, this one or another version of one, but we need you to approve a budget so that we can send it to the city. No matter that the state has not done their work, we have to have a budget to the city by April the 1st. And so we plan to do that. In fact, we plan to submit it on March the 30th. Now, what happens with the rest of this calendar will change. Since the state has not done their work, the city does not have to approve our budget by May 15th if the state has not approved a state budget. So we'll just have to see what the city does about their own budget and what their public hearing dates are, and then what happens with an appropriation for us. But that's what the rest of the timeline looks like. And before I conclude my remarks, I would be remiss if I didn't say a big thank you to our budget staff for all the work that they've done getting us to tonight. Specifically, I'd like to thank Scarlett Minta, who is our new budget director. This is her first pass through the budget water. And I want to thank her for her tireless efforts in getting us here, as well as Sue Tutone, who is new to our school division. And it was her first trip through our budget as well, and Jennifer Coppola. Because a lot of our work is about salaries and people, I also want to thank Stephanie Hots and Joanne Armstrong. I'm usually pretty good with numbers, but I didn't count how many questions I asked. I'm sure they might have. But it was at least dozens, let's just say dozens, and leave it at that. So they were always ready with responses, so I want to thank them for their help. So I'd be glad to address any questions if I could.
Any questions? Mr. Brown? I'd be interested to see, as I see in the presentation, we have the custodian and child nutrition workers. I'd be interested to see other support staff positions as well and where we rank.
I'm sorry, you can go.
Oh, Ms. Simons.
So my question, thank you very much, by the way. And we all got a very nice proposed budget that's always really well organized and award-winning document, so thank you. I know a lot of work goes into this. I am not clear on which state budget you base this on.
Numbers, the governor's budget.
But is the governor's more like the House or the Senate? I mean, which one?
Well, the governor's budget that was put out in December, Governor McCullough's budget. Now, that's going to go away, as I understand, and I've had some conversations with our attorney Lynn Holland about how this process works. And I don't really, this is not the first time we've had the General Assembly not deliver a budget on time during my tenure here. In fact, I was reading an article the other day that said it's the sixth time in 17 years that they haven't completed a budget on schedule. So we have done this before. I don't frankly remember exactly the machinations of it, but Lynn and I are talking today about the fact that we think that Governor Northam now has to introduce a budget because the budget bills have failed. And so they didn't extend the session, they ended the session, they adjourned the session. So now they have to start a new session. So, you know, that's not my area of expertise, but it's my understanding that now we'll need to have a new budget presented. So then there will be a new budget presented. If you look at the total, and really, at that point, I guess anything could happen. So if you look at the total funding from the state for the governor's budget, for us, it was up $6 million. If you look at the House version of the bill, it was up about $7.2 million. If you look at the Senate's version of the budget, it was up about 6.1. So the Senate version of the budget and the governor's, Governor McCullough's budget, were similar in what they netted for us. Different places, we got different funding in different areas, but the net total was pretty close. The House budget was more, because recall that they had more to work with, more revenue to work with. So what will happen next? I don't really know. The re-benchmarking, whether they would go back and redo that, I find that doubtful. It's pretty arduous process. A lot of the money that we got in the state budget, the increase, was due to the re-benchmarking. This was the first year in the state's financial process. We talked about that in January. And so, you know, that is really what a lot of the money, new money, is for. There is no salary money, new salary money, salary increase in the state budget for this year. There wasn't in the governor's budget, it was in the second year. So most of the $6 million, well, not most, all of it, really was about re-benchmarking. So, but what will happen? I really can't tell you. I don't really know.
Mr. Dodger.
So on the, I guess, the segregation of capital and operating, have we, with that arrangement, have you secured a commitment that, you know, our capital, annual capital money is going to be provided to cover our capital cost? Has that been worked out?
I have not been involved in this conversation, so I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that, to me, is fundamentally critical.
But if I understand your question correctly, let me make sure I understand your question correctly. If what you're saying is...
Well, essentially, I'm saying that in the, you know, in the past, the memorable past, we've gotten a certain amount of money, which included, which was an overall budget funding commitment. It included operating expenses and capital expenses. And now if they're going to, if we're going to take capital out and do it in a different column.
It included, right, included operating and debt service, right? So the debt service portion of the capital. Remember that the debt is the city's debt. They incur it on our behalf. You, we are not allowed to incur debt. So the reason that it's structured this way is legally, we can't have debt. So for the repairs and things that are done, new buildings, you know, DSA when it was built, all that, the debt that's incurred is incurred by the city.
built, all that, the debt that's incurred is incurred by the city, and it is the city's debt. They will pay it. I mean, they did before, they will still. I feel confident of that. So, that's your question. I don't think that's really a concern. I don't think that's a concern. We can certainly talk to the city about it, but the debt will get paid. Is there debt?
I think it's worth discussing.
We can certainly discuss it. What I do think it's fair to show you every year is this slide, so that it's still clear what the total investment is in education for the city. So, what part is debt service, what part is operating? We won't include the debt service in the operating budget any longer, but I think to look at what the total investment in education is in the city is a valid concern for the board, and I think we should do that. So, I would expect to provide this for you in the future.
Well, and so, when you look at that graph, the light blues over 10 years has been getting less and less and less, and no one needs to be deluded into thinking that we're saving money there, because what's really happening is we're not keeping up with our work and we're not replacing systems, you know, before they fail. We're not putting roofs on on a proper schedule. And so, this just simply reflects the lack of investment in capital projects that we need to be doing to make sure roofs don't leak and air conditioning systems don't fail. That curve right there is what it looks like when you stop repairing your car, and you then have to answer the question, what am I going to do when it doesn't work anymore? If that curve doesn't turn back in the other direction, we are going to be confronted with crises where actual buildings will be threatened in terms of, you know, being able to continue to operate them. We'll end up with air conditioning systems that go out in April with no solution, you know, until school closes. That curve right there indicates that we are not keeping up with our maintenance.
I agree with your assessment, and I share your concern.
Anyone else?
Mr. Ely.
Great presentation, Ms. Mary Lou.
Thank you.
I saw in your presentation, you said if we do close Huntington, we would save money on staffing. Are we paying, what are we paying for the staff that we currently have there?
Oh, Mr. Ely, we have so much turnover. Everyone will have a job, it won't be a problem.
Okay.
Because there's so few in every group, every employee group, that we would not need, that they'll find jobs. We'll be begging them to work somewhere.
Okay, perfect.
It won't be a problem.
Thank you.
I really shouldn't have said that, sorry, I meant to say that.
I got nervous there.
Mr. Ashby.
I too would like to share a comment and compliment you and the team in reference to the budget presentation and the research and work that's been done in it. And while I smile or receptive to the reference to the increase in preschool and early education, but a concern that I have is we could add, overlooking adding two elementary counselors. And the reason why I say that, and this is, I know you have to work with what you have, but there's a report last night on the news, and it said CHKD wants to build a whole other facility because of the mental and emotional challenges that children have. And we know the essentiality of elementary counselors. We know that, you know, academic is just one, but helping them with their social developmental, emotional growth, how to respond to things and everything, and it's just challenging that we really can't see, we can see it, but the funding's not there for our children in reference to that type of counseling. The counseling, the guidance, the support that's needed, and all the research clearly and concretely tells us that what we do with children before the age of even, I always say five and six years of age, but before the age of 10 and 11, you know, how we're helping them emotionally is crucial and critical, and that's what counselors do. You know, I was part of that first cohort back in '87, when elementary guidance counselors went to William &amp; Mary, and we received that degree in elementary counseling, and I remember Dr. Libby Hoffman sharing, stating, and emphasizing the importance of elementary counselors, you know. And we have counselors that do a phenomenal job, that have a large amount of children, but somewhere down the line with the funding, you know, we're just hoping that those that are responsible, city, state, local, will look at that, you know? And I know the issue, I know the part of it is money, but as you always hear me say every year, the issue is really children.
Yes, sir, I understand.
It's really, really children, and that's, that has to be looked at. When I heard, when I saw that last night, that scared me, you know? They want to build a whole facility to help with mental health for preschool, primary, and elementary school children, you know? So, it's just something that all of us look at. Again, just hats off to the work that you do, because we know you do phenomenal work with what you have. Those people that are funding us, they have to look at that, you know, they do still. So, thank you so very much.
Anyone else?
Ms. Russo, I just want to say again, phenomenal presentation. Here's a little, we've talked about this Huntington thing, I saw that we were going to say $1.7 million, right? But in that study, I do recall, there was another school of ours that's going to fall on that same deaf ears. And so, we should, you know, there should be some provisions coming up in the next year or so, that Warwick High, you know, Warwick High School is going to be our next school of casualty, of interest that needs to be rebuilt. And so, those funds that we put in, you know, 10 years ago or seven years ago for Huntington, we're not there. We need to start looking at what are we going to do with our Warwick High School as we approach the coming year, so that's all I wanted to say.
Right after we finish this budget, we are going to start on the capital budget, so we'll...
And so, we want to make sure that if our city council had not heard about that particular school, that maybe we can get this particular school and get the funding for that particular school. Like I said again, we can't put those many, that many people in our high schools somewhere, so.
Right.
Again, job well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay? We're going to move on. Comments by our acting superintendent?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to express my appreciation to Mary Lou and our budget staff. If you recall, when we presented in January, we looked at more than $20 million of needs in a budget that was not balanced. So, a few short months later, to get to a budget that balances a lot of things with new positions to meet needs, plus compensation and compression, and really walking that tight rope, it's a phenomenal job that's been done by all the departments, but especially our budget staff to put all those pieces together. So, first and foremost, thank you for that. It's also my first budget, so I appreciate all the support in putting it together as well. It's also Plant Services and Custodial Services Appreciation Week. As you know, we've talked a lot about capital this evening, and they're in charge of the maintenance, repair, and cleanliness of our buildings. Recently, we've held several events at Heinz Middle School, from a job fair to a teacher expo, and that building is over 25 years old. And when you walk in that building, you don't know it's 25 years old. We do a fantastic job of maintaining and repairing our buildings. Two of our showcase high schools, anytime we have an event at Woodside or High School, people remark about how beautiful the building is. Those buildings are over 20 years old. Our staff does a tremendous job, so we want to thank them every week, but this is a special week for them. And then, lastly, for our families, we have a new initiative, and it's the Newport News Public Schools Family Forum and Resource Fair. It's a three-part series. It's an effort to push our schools into our community. The Boys and Girls Clubs are beautiful partners of ours, so we're going to partner with the Boys and Girls Club in a three-part series to provide resources for our families, from groceries to clothing, school supplies, you name it. It's going to be a one-stop shop for our families. Plus, you get to sit down with the acting superintendent, talk about the hopes and dreams for your kids in your community over lunch, and it's Chick-fil-A, what gets better than that. So, three-part series, the first one is March 24th at the Greater Hampton Roads Boys and Girls Club, followed by April 21st at South Morrison Family Education Center, then May 9th at the Peninsula Boys and Girls Club. So, strategically, because we're such a long city, we have one in each part of the city, and we'll see where it goes. With any new initiative you're building, as you go, but it's going to meet the needs of families and really meet the needs as we look forward to next year. So, those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're going to go next to matters of the board. We're going to start first with Ms. Ramirez.
All right, well, thank you very much. I would like to also thank you. I am not an expert on budgetary matters, but that seemed like a wonderful presentation. It was very thorough. I would also like to express my joy at seeing that the 2% salary increase is still in there. I know last year, there was a lot of effort to get the 3% salary increase, and it didn't go through because of, you know, just the complications of the politics of the matter, but I'm really glad that we're still working on it. And I know that that's always been a priority for everyone here, and I just want to express the students' gratefulness that that's still a priority for you guys, because we really, we know that our teachers deserve it. We're the reason our teachers deserve it, so thank you for that. I also wanted to update you guys. A couple of you, or many of you, I don't know, may know that there is a nationwide walkout scheduled for tomorrow. It's student participation mostly. I just wanted to let you guys know, as I'm sure some of the public is wondering, that I do know of students who will be participating throughout Newport News. I don't know exactly how many, but that will be occurring at some of our schools. So, you know, we're politically active, but just to keep the public aware, the students are engaged.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Well, again, a great budget presentation. I want to make the public aware, I'll be working on a school to prison pipeline event on Thursday at the Demby Community Center at 6:30. I hope to see a lot of the public out there. This is part of our ongoing discussion that we've had on this topic throughout the year. Some of you, hopefully, who followed this discussion, recall that we had an equity conference this summer that I participated in. Then, we had Delegate Mike Mullin hosted a roundtable discussion event back in the fall. And this time around, now Delegate Mullin, I've invited him to come to the Demby Community Center, and he'll be participating in this discussion that we'll be having, along with Police Chief Grimstead and our acting superintendent. So, should be a very good discussion, hope to hear from all of you in the public about your solutions to this challenge, and looking forward to it. Now, back to the budget, as we talked about last year, we did request a 3% increase from council in order to fund a 3% raise, and we did not get that, that we did not get an increase. It was, we received the same amount of money that we had the previous year. So, by my math, then council's got some additional funds that they can apply this year to help us with a 4% staff increase. So, I'm still looking at, and that is still my target, to have a 4% staff increase for all. We've made a lot of progress in the last four years. We started off with our teacher pay being, in my opinion, not competitive, and our support staff pay being not competitive, and we made some significant strides, and those strides have paid off for us, I think, greatly. We've seen that vacancies have been filled, and in a time that we're experiencing, that everyone's experiencing staff shortages, we've been able to keep our staff. But in order to keep our quality staff, we have to continue to pay competitively, and I believe that that's a target that we need to continue to push. So, we see here in this budget that we're sort of halfway there, and I think it's more within, well within striking distance for us to push the rest of the way there and get that 4% staff increase. So, that's, for me, that's still a target and still something that I'm looking to pursue in this budget. All right, and with that, turn it back over.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Ely.
This one is very glad about the, that we was able to do with our budget to have no increase in the healthcare for our families. That's very important, because it's very hard, you know, to maintain, being a lot of our staff is already underpaid. It's very good that we definitely don't have an increase in our healthcare. Also glad that we're able to raise, give a raise for employees even not knowing what the state's going to do. So, we're still giving that 2% raise for our employees, because our employees work so hard, day and night, to make it Newport News Public School System the best school system there is. So, I'm very glad that we were still going to give a 2% raise even not knowing what the state's going to do. Also, congratulations to everybody who attended DSA for the family fair. It was amazing. We had thousands of people out there, and just to see everybody come together to enjoy our beautiful school, like Gary said, hopefully, well, we are going to have a new Huntington Middle School and a new Warwick High School coming soon. So, you can definitely see the enjoyment of the whole community enjoying the new school. And I, you know, with the average age of our school buildings being over 50 years old, we definitely have some work to do. We need to try to, we need to be producing three to four schools a year. I think that's the target rate we should be at, being that a lot of our schools, you know, Norfolk did it, didn't it just do five schools?
Over a two-year period. I hope that's correct.
Yeah, so, I envision Newport News doing the same thing, because we definitely, we definitely, we're the best city, and we're going to continue to move in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Ms. Simons.
Again, thanks so much for the budget presentation tonight. I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Stodgill was saying about the decline in debt service really represents a decline in capital investment. It represents a decline in building in the city, not just maintenance, but a decline in building new schools. And in order to be the greatest city that we know we are, we need to have good school buildings so that companies want to come and move here, so that employees want to build their houses and renovate houses and live in Newport News. So, I do think it's very important to be ready for our capital needs and to advocate at the city level for building new schools in Newport News. And I'll conclude by saying I will be out and about tomorrow supporting our students on the National Walkout for School Safety Day. Just like many of our families, I am very concerned about school safety, and it's another reason that I think we need to look at rebuilding some of our high schools. We have over 100 of these learning cottages, these trailers around our city, they're really not safe. So, we need to be looking at rebuilding some of our schools so that we can make sure that everybody's, you know, in the building. And I just, I want to thank our students, because I feel like they really are taking leadership, and I think that the walkout demonstrates that our students are citizen-ready. And of course, the most important part of being a citizen is voting, Sophia, so will you please mention to the students that if they, you know, really care about these issues, that they need to register to vote? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simons.
Mr. Stodgill. Thank you. Well, in questions about the budget presentation, I spent some time talking about, we're not keeping up with our capital work, and we're not, and we're seeing a reduction in funding. We're seeing a reduction in funding as the Newport News, you know, public school division. The problem is, the city has not been keeping up with the requests that we've been making, and we've had our capital funding reduced. And you can see the trend lines that are shown reflect a lack of commitment on the city's part to answer the questions and the requests of what it takes to run the school division. And I just, I'm going to put a point on it, and I'm going to say it's time in this city. We're in, we're in an economy that has recovered. Now is the time that the city needs to put, you know, a couple of feet forward and start putting an emphasis on child development like they've put an emphasis on real estate development. It's high time that the leaders in our city realize that you can't reduce, reduce, and reduce your way to excellence. When the expectations are here, you're not going to get there by cut, cut, cut. It's time to emphasize child development over real estate development, because we've had it the other way around for far too long.
Mr. Stodgill, and thank you, Mr. Stodgill. And Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Ashby.
Add to, Mr. Stodgill, not only child development, early child development also. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Ely said. I too attended a Discovery STEM Academy, which was just a phenomenal experience, and I had the same type of vision and insight and reference to, wow, what could happen to Huntington with a similar experience? Huntington with a similar experience to that? It is a phenomenal, phenomenal school. We had, I, I think it was two thousand, two hundred?
Fifty-one.
Wow, fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Which was really phenomenal, and I was there, and just people there interacting and working and seeing the STEM concept, and just the vision of Newport News Public Schools having that vision of building Discovery STEM Academy. We know where the most highest-paying jobs, I mean, careers are going to be. They are STEM-related. I think it's sixty or sixty-five percent of the most highest-paying careers are STEM-related. So this school system being preactive and proactive in reference to building a Discovery STEM Academy, and again, connecting that to what could happen at Huntington Middle School, and the communities behind that, the community is supporting that, and that was evident and demonstrated in the amount of people that came to the Discovery STEM Academy, that, that, that fair that day. I also would just like to say and share hats off to the superintendent and the staff that went out last night at, or this morning, about three o'clock, three-thirty in the morning, to make sure our roads were okay. Are you awake, Mr. Nichols? No. That went out to make sure that our, that our roads were, were safe and that our children got to school on time, but just to do that, for getting our children in school, I, I think was absolutely phenomenal. I, I don't talk politics. I see myself as an advocate for children. But I gotta tell you, I watched Sixty Minutes last Sunday night, and what I saw and what I heard by the Secretary of Education about children, and I don't call our children at risk, I call them at promise, okay, 'cause it's all how you look at something. And I listened to that report. I even called some people, encouraged them to watch it, and I watched it because I, I felt challenged by the Secretary of Education and her view on, on, on all children. But then it made me look at the opposite side of what this school system has done for children, particularly over the last eleven and twelve years. And I know it may sound repetitive, it may sound redundant, but when you look at our free and reduced lunch children with a ninety-six point five on-time graduation rate, that did not only work, happened with hard work, it happened with hard work. It happened with instruction. It happened with innovation. It happened with high expectations. It happened with working with families. It happened with all, all of that. You've heard me say, when I go to Q Conference, Council of Urban School Boards, and I'm discussing our graduation rate, I'm discussing the closure of the achievement gap, I'm discussing the preactiveness and the proactiveness in reference to how many children we have in early childhood programs. You know, people say, where, where, where are you? What's your school system? Because that is what's happened, and you'll always hear me say, people are entitled to their opinion, but they are not entitled to their facts. The facts are the facts. And with the graduation rates, and I look, I look at several things. I look at the free and reduced lunch rate, I look at the overall on-time graduation rate, I look at, you know, because there's a thing about, okay, well, what, how are your African-American males doing? Eighty-five percent of our African-American males graduate on time. When we add the GED and the completion on time, I mean, the, the completion rate, it starts at eighty-nine to ninety percent. That is a result of the innovation and the vision of this school system, the high expectations. And Newport News Public Schools is doing phenomenal. And when I, again, reflect back to that report, then I look at what Newport News Public Schools is doing and has done, and what the vision is for our school system, you just simply see that we are moving and going in the right direction. And that's, that's phenomenal. That, that is good. So, Mary Lou, hats off to, to the staff and to the team that presented that budget. But with the results in which we are producing in a situation setting like that, yes, I agree with Mr. Stodgill, the city has to come and support what we're doing. Look what we're doing, we're doing, we're doing more with less. If you really stop and think about that, could you imagine if we had the full support of what, what the request is, where our children would be? Our goal is a hundred percent on-time graduation rate. It can happen. So if it's where it is now with support, it can happen. And remember, this is about investing in our greatest resource. Our greatest resource in this city are our children. And, and just, again, hats off to Newport News Public Schools for the phenomenal work that has been done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I think everything has been said. There's great things that are happening in Newport News Public Schools, and I'm just gonna piggyback on Colton, and I agree, my philosophy that, in my fraternity, we always talk about, there's no need to stand before a pain teller where no deposits have been made. And really, basically what that means, if, education is an investment. That's why we send our kids to college, or send them to trade schools, or whatever the case may be, and because you wanna get an investment. And so, once the city decides that, how much do they really want to invest to reap the rewards? That's what education is about. Education is an investment. It is not an expense. We talk about it, we talk about it in terms of expenses, but really, it's an investment. So you make deposits, and you invest in your kids, and guess what? These students and young folk, they actually bloom up, and they come out, and they do produce, they get good jobs, they stay in this, this city. They become individuals that sit on this board, that sit on the city council board, they become doctors, lawyers, Indian chiefs, and maybe we'll have a president here of the United States here from Newport News. But that only happens when you invest. And so, my thing today is, you know, you must invest in our students. That's all we're asking our citizens in our city to understand, where does education stand in their priority? Where does it stand? Does it stand at twenty-four percent? You know, that's not really a good term in investment, twenty-four percent, when we used to get twenty-seven percent on our investments. So I'm just telling you, it's an investment. So we are asking for a larger deposit so we can get a better return. That being said, that's all my comments. And we need to go into a closed meeting. Is that correct?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. The school board will hold a closed meeting in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section two point two dash three one one A subsection three, for the purpose of discussing the disposition of publicly-held real property, specifically the Service Center for Operations and Transportation, which is the Scott Complex.
You heard the motion, the second?
Sorry.
You heard the motion. Heard the second? Just dear question. None question being, Ms. Simpson, please call her.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
And Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
We will adjourn to the closed meeting. Good stuff, good people. All right.